Well, um, actually, does anybody have any changes to the agenda?
Yeah.
I do. I would like to move the unfinished business Paul Mace and Megan, uh, above the committee reports, just with their s- their commutes and schedules in mind.
Okay.
Um, that's the only change I have. So, if nobody else has any changes, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Privilege of the floor. Have nobody here for privilege of the floor. So, does anybody have any changes to the minutes of the last meeting? Are we okay with the last meeting minutes?
I am.
Then, may I have a motion to, uh, accept the minutes for the June ninth meeting?
I'll make them.
Will go second time? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That'll be it. Jeff?
Treasurer's report.
Thank you Keith, appreciate that. Hello everyone, good evening Ken. Uh, the report for the year end, June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, pretty much stayed where we said we were gonna stay. Ended the overall budget approximately thirty-nine thousand eight eighty-one less spending than budgeted, but the Baker and Taylor has been entered through May, there's still the June bills outstanding, so that shouldn't be more than about another four or five thousand. And then, there could still be a couple of oddball June bills that might not have been entered since we're still fairly early into July. But I would say at worst case, we're gonna be thirty-two or thirty-three thousand under budget on spending. And as of now, you see the total cash, two twenty-seven, which is more or less what we've been saying for the last three or four months that we'd end with approximately two twenty-five to two thirty, so that should, you know, it pretty much is where we said it would be. If we had been completely on budget, we would've ended with about two hundred thousand, so we're definitely ending, you know, in a much better position because of, you know, certain areas, and that's despite other areas that didn't go as well as planned that were beyond our control, mainly the retirement bill. Um, and for the year, the salaries was fourteen hundred twenty-three dollars under budget. And I don't think there was anything else that really stood out that dramatically. I'll have to look, you know, more closely into it. Um, but I think overall, that's pretty much, you know, the only thing that stood out. The Baker and Taylor by the next meeting, which should be fully, you know, entered. Like, maybe for the next meeting, I could rerun June and see what it really looked like, but it shouldn't change by that much, just the June Baker and Taylor bills. And any, uh, odd or end bills that might come in, that shouldn't be that material or significant. And the, the loan balance after the July first payment with six payments to go is fifty thousand eight ninety-one thirteen. So, five more payments this, this count, year end of January one is the last payment. So, more or less, that's where we're, where we're at.
Everybody have any questions?
I just have one. The, um, we're nine thousand eight hundred over on the total employee benefits, that's because of the retirement fund?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. The, the health insurance was right on, it was slightly over by a thousand, but that's gonna improve in the future, 'cause earlier in the year for last year, we had, uh, more employees on the plan. The, the first bill for July was actually a couple thousand less than it spent, it was, 'cause we had a credit for the retirees that are going on their own now, so we had like a thirteen hundred dollar credit in July, so we're starting off the new year in good shape on that. But yeah, definitely the retirement, if it wasn't for the retirement, we would've probably, we would've been under budget on the employee benefits.
Okay.
So, the, the retirement bill really was what made the difference there, but even sustaining that, the overall budget was still, did pretty well, did really well.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a question on the, uh, the fund balances around two twenty-five, something like that's gonna be at the end.
Yeah, yeah.
And then what was it at eight exactly a year ago?
I think it was like two fifty-six or something. I could get you that number, but it was in the two fifty range, two fifty seven.
So, even though we have s- underspent, um, our budget, we, we had to draw down the fund balance.
Right, 'cause we, absolutely, 'cause we originally had sixty-three thousand as the drawdown for the unappropriated reserve or whatever we call the terminology, and we only really did about, you know, thirty thousand of it. So, we were planning on, you know, decreasing the fund balance by sixty-three, and we only decreased it by like thirty, roughly. So, you know, we definitely came in ahead.
And in the budget that we have established for the coming twelve months, how much of the fund balance drawdown is there?
Th- uh, thirty thousand, I believe, thirty thousand eight hundred, I think, something like that. And then for the year after that, it, there shouldn't be any drawdown, 'cause the loan will be completely out in the following year's budget. So, next year is the last year that there'll be a little bit, if we were on budget, drawdown, but if we came in another thirty grand below, then we should, in theory, we should end next year with the same amount of cash left if we're thirty grand under, yeah, next year, approximately.
And, and you did a projection, um, out like five years?
Yeah, yeah.
And the fund balance basically disappeared.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, be continually tapping it like that, yeah, so.
But s- but apparently, what you're saying, we're gonna be able to stop tapping it at least for that one year?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, assuming we'll be able to stop tapping it, if, assuming the retirement bill goes down, which the state is more or less almost, yeah, promised, I guess we could say, according to that letter they sent us. And if the health insurance, which is the other wild card, doesn't go too crazy.
Okay.
But right now, we're kind of made up the difference in the health by people leaving, not that the rates have gone down.
Right.
So.
Now, this also includes, uh, or does it include the amount we haven't spent towards the repairs?
Yeah, that's another thing too, right, we're, if, if, if we had used all the retire- repair money, then we wouldn't be, you know, 'cause we only used sixteen thousand out of the thirty, so technically, that's more money that we're, you know, gonna be using.
So, it's really fourteen or, or nine?
Yeah.
How much?
It was twenty-five plus the five that had been in there to start with.
Five.
Right. Right, right, so, yeah, we have six, thirteen thousand six ninety-one left in that line.
So, there's nine thousand left over basically from the additional
Right.
that we asked for.
Right, right, we didn't use it all, right.
So, really, we tapped the fund balance, an additional nine thousand dollars past, or nine, right, does that how it works?
Yeah, that sounds right, yeah.
So, that helped, not using the repairs, but we still intend to use the repairs just for something larger than that.
Just have the, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Right. It'll just spill into the next year, but, right, the money is in the bank, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report. Motion made by
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Director's report.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Jack.
Good meeting, thank you.
Take care.
Jack's going on vacation for the next day.
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
Thank you, Dr. Capecon. Thanks, everyone.
Take care.
Have a great week. Bye now.
Everything's ducking.
Oh, good report.
Received the various requests again from RCLS, this happens every year, remember what it is? This is where I explain in a narrative how we are moving to, uh, mitigate the problems of the building, uh, either here or elsewhere. This is, um, something we've done every year since I've been in that office.
So, it comes from RCLS?
Well, it's a state, but it, it goes through RCLS, right, they, they first approve at their board and then they send it to, uh, send to the state. Um, and they, they've been watching it, they know, I, I th- I think they, they believe that, you know, we're making an effort to
Mm-hmm.
to deal with the, uh, to up our level of accommodation, I guess you'd say.
Mad received.
Right.
We're all being so nice about it.
Um, let's see. Oh, Friends, uh, book sale, as you see, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, that was great.
We stayed open, which we don't typically do, ten, two, three, I, I was reference for the day and, and Norma was circulation, and we just kept the downstairs closed. We had a fairly good amount of traffic, a lot of bathroom traffic, but also people actually taking stuff out.
It was a, it was a well visited, uh, great American week, and I think everybody did great.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It was like a, like a teeming out there. Uh, Dan is back, but will be out again, there's some, another procedure. Joanne is also still out. And s- expects to be back within a few weeks, uh, uh, just for, as a part timer for the time being. Keep you apprised about that situation. I called Ken today, but I didn't get a hold. Does anyone know how his Shakespeare? This is first weekend.
I was there on Saturday, it, it was great.
It was really great.
The whole tent was full and people were, actually, there was a couple sitting on the outside of the tent.
Sunday, I went Sunday also, and it was about two-thirds full, so it was less people, I think either the rain kept them away
Yeah.
or they were there on Saturday.
Well, for the opening weekend, it was good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was good.
Um, I mentioned the security, uh, we upped the security a bit on, on some of the computers and it seems to be working without too much, uh, static on the little vendors. Um, long rates planned, Paul Mace and Megan Brennan will meet with the board, good. I think you all know them, I should introduce them if you don't. Have you guys all met? I think so, right, a while back?
I think so.
Okay, so, no, no, okay, nothing's changed.
No, definitely.
Um.
On many levels.
Everybody seems changed. Uh, I'm serving another term on the Rotary Board, if I may, I should, uh, can you, uh, some speeding fines here, because I want to get some good stuff. Yeah, and that downspout problem that Danny and I worked on, four hours in the blistering sun seems to work, have worked, so.
He's intrigued by it.
Uh, that's about it, really. I mean, the newsletter came out nice, came out on time, the, 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 the other reports, I'm sure you, I'm sure you've seen, the place has been packed, uh, it's, uh, summer reading time, so, um, we've had a steady screening programs and programmers and kids stuff. Um, yeah, and otherwise, it's, it's pretty familiar as usual. Any questions?
There still tickets for the Liberty Science trip?
As far as I know, yeah. We, we just got the, um, parking lot secured for, from the school, many days, so.
Nice.
Still good.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Then, let's move to jump over committee reports to unfinished business with Paul and Megan, uh, giving you guys the floor.
Thank you, and recognizing that you have a meeting in an air-conditioned room, we'll, we'll keep it short. Uh, but having worked with the committee for a while now, we, we had asked your indulgence to, to spend a little bit of time with you this evening, just to sort of update where we are and, uh, and how, how things are coming along, as well as to look ahead at a couple of milestones that we need to, to be discussing. So, I'm gonna hand out, uh, an updated, uh, project timeline here, and, uh, I'll, I'll apologize first. The date at the top says May twenty-first, that should actually be
I get more excited doing the actual program.
That should actually
items, I didn't update the date on the
But you, you've seen an earlier version of this, and we continue to update it through the process. But, in essence, um, we are in the middle of our, uh, report development, and as you'll recall, uh, the report development is essentially a site comparison to review the options for the library in terms of providing services to your charter to serve area. We're looking at two different options, one is renovations and or expansion of this building on this site, and how they compare in terms of, uh, ability to meet, uh, the demands of the community with, uh, the Solishan Park site. So, those are the two things we're exploring, and, and obviously, they're very different sites, and, um, that, that, that's sort of intuitive. But, uh, what we're trying to do is quantify the things that you're able to do and the things that you wouldn't be able to do in one case or another, uh, as well as what the costs, both financial and, and political, are to, to any of those decisions. In essence, we've been exploring these things, we've, we've, uh, done an existing conditions analysis whereby we've, uh, accomplished what we call a building envelope report. We've gone through the existing building to determine the conditions of, uh, the, the weather envelope, that is, the roof, walls, windows, doors, et cetera, and the condition they're in, uh, as well as interior systems. That gives you a good baseline in terms of the condition of this building and its ability to move forward as a, as a framework or as a skeleton that we can build from, um, within the constraints of the site that you have here. At the same time, we've been exploring, uh, and reviewing the materials relative to the Solishan site, and that is, uh, not just obviously the property boundaries and, and, uh, size, but how the topography relates to possible placement of a building, what could it accomplish there, uh, and so forth. And, and in that regard, we've been going back and forth with the committee on a number of different thoughts and ideas that we, uh, thought we'd review quickly with you, uh, this evening, just to keep you posted on where we are. The project timeline that we've handed out gives you a little sense, though, of why we can't move too far down the line. Some of you may recall when we made our initial presentations to discuss this, uh, scope of services with you, we emphasized the need for public input in the design process, that is, in the, uh, when we work on libraries, and Megan and I work on libraries all over the northeast, uh, we try very hard to make sure that they are consistent with the community they serve. So, our library in Warwick, the Wisner Library, is very different than our library in Gardner, uh, for example, which are both in your library system in RCLS. Monroe, which is in your library system, is different from Cornwall and so on. So, having said that, getting public input is an important part of the process. Making sure we're getting public input, though, means that we schedule those workshop meetings at a time when we can maximize attendance. And I think, um, what we've sort of reached a consensus on is that September is probably the best time to do those community workshops. At those community workshops, we will usually do three parts. We will begin with, uh, a short but, but sort of informative primer on library design, that is, what libraries are doing today, what other libraries in other communities have done, and, uh, sort of try to open people's minds to, uh, what libraries can be as we're moving, uh, further into the twenty-first century. Uh, the second part is exploring the context of what our options are, both here and at the Solishan site. Let's look at those two things so that people have a knowledge and a sense of why one might make more sense than another depending on what we're trying to accomplish. But the third part is a dialogue, and we break into discussion groups, and then, uh, we sort of reconcile all the answers into a document that, uh, is centered around four, sometimes five questions, which we in the committee will structure to try and elicit information from the community about the types of services they want and what that building would include, what are we trying to accomplish, that's called the program. Now, we've worked with, uh, in fact, Megan spent a couple days down here with the director and the staff, uh, discussing specific programmatic items, what spaces relate to each other, I mean, we have a sense as library architects how that usually goes, but to get a personal sense of, of your situation, uh, what things are easy to accomplish, what things can't be done due to space limitations and so forth, that's been done. The physical conditions part has been done, now what we're looking for is public input. So, the first thing we'd like to ask you to, uh, hopefully, everybody has calendars with them this evening, because board attendance at these public meetings means a lot. It shows that you have engagement in the process and, and faith in it moving forward and that, uh, you're, you're part of it. If we were looking at September, uh, what we'd like to do is, is schedule a time, probably middle to end of the month, after school has started again, people are back into regular schedules. And we would often schedule two dates, usually a weeknight and then a Saturday. And the reasoning for that is to try and get people who aren't able to go out in evenings and at the same time get, uh, uh, different groups so that we maximize attendance. And we'll have several suggestions for you along the way, cookies being one. But as an example, if you have a teen group and they could provide babysitting for the two hours of the session, that's a very popular type of thing to do, because now, parents aren't worried about, well, I'd like to go to the meeting, but I can't because I, you know, now it's actually part of the, part of the meeting and part of engaging in library services as well. So, we'll talk about things like that, but, um, we were wondering if we could open our calendars and look at some dates in September to, to try and schedule those charrettes. Our calendars fill up pretty quickly, so to us, that was a pretty important, uh, part of tonight's meeting, if everybody's got something. I'll throw some dates out if, uh,
Well, last time we tried to have a special meeting in September, um, I think you had a meeting with parents, and Norm also had similar, and I wondered if those dates have been determined yet, when the schools have those meetings?
Our, their calendars don't usually go, get put together till like, I think, August. I can look now to see if it's up, but I doubt that it's up yet.
Okay.
But I know that mine is usually like, uh, I say I have a lot of norms, but mine is usually a Thursday night, usually.
Middle of September, is it?
It is, it's middle to end of September.
Is this like a school orientation meeting, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Um, we, we, as I say, if we know what those dates are, we'll certainly try to work around them. If, it's usually a Thursday night, did you say?
I think so, usually is, that doesn't mean it will be.
Okay, okay.
I'll look now to see if their calendar's up, I don't think they have it up yet, though.
Another thing that will be important to think about is a venue, that is, how many people might attend something like this and where can we hold it, because the availability of a space may, we may only be able to set tentative dates for now.
Senior Center's pretty roomy.
Is it, and, and?
And it, it's very, uh, what?
I said, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's very roomy, and, uh, you can
And easy to schedule?
Yeah, it is, they're pretty accommodating.
Good, okay.
So, they're pretty helpful.
So, uh,
And actually, they even have an extra room where they have their club meetings with, with, these, like, the senior kids.
I see. I- if, if I, um, threw a couple of dates out, I mean, would that make sense for everyone, or, or, uh, and then we can tentatively put them in the calendar and then see if, if the space is available and, and if we have to, we're not announcing it publicly, you know, we're not putting out flyers
Right, until we have it all, sure.
so we have time to change it if we want. Um, I, I would suggest perhaps, um, if, if we were looking, try, trying to avoid the, the, the parent-teacher orientation type thing, what if we said, uh, Tuesday night, Tuesday evening, the twenty-third? And then Saturday, the twenty-seventh? Or would Sundays be better? Do you think a Sunday afternoon is better than a Saturday in your community?
You know, that's a tough call.
No, no, no.
Okay, you were just mentioning a, a Shakespeare event, for example.
Oh, that's, that's just, what's that?
It seems dead on Sunday, though, where people are.
Does it?
Well, you know what, I don't know how many people are motivated to go out and do something on Sunday afternoon.
Gosh, is the, that is the village, isn't it?
Oh, seriously?
Oh, anyway.
Yeah, the whole place shuts, so.
I don't know where they go.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Nobody.
Okay, roll up sidewalks and
It is, it is, it's just like, they're all abducted.
Yeah, the whole village closes, it's funny.
Okay.
But, yeah, Saturday afternoon is, is, is
Yeah, it's probably bad.
All right.
I don't, you know, as long as myself, I like to be in, ready for the next week.
Because you're already there.
Yeah, right, I just wanna get prepped for the next one.
I can't do, I, I can't do Tuesday nights, 'cause the board, we have our board meetings, so.
Okay, um, wh- what about Wednesday, the twenty-fourth?
Um, this is Rosh Hashanah, that's on, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, that's
Oh.
We don't think we should do that.
So, I can't, yes, and I just know that, 'cause that's on the calendar.
Okay.
All right.
Understood.
My, my open houses, but then, uh,
Oh, that actually worked, would work out, then the kids are off on that day, okay.
Tuesday, the thirtieth?
Tu- Tuesday, the thirtieth is fine, but then, w- uh, Saturday, the fourth is, is Yom Kippur?
Well, we could do the twenty-seventh, the month.
But we, oh, so we can do Saturday first, we do the twenty-seventh, and then Tuesday, the thirtieth?
We could do the Saturday first, and then do the
How does that work for everyone?
I don't know, Tu- Tuesday, you, your meeting every
It's every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
So, the Thursday, Tuesday?
The second week and then
That's the fifth Tuesday, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you could do the thirtieth?
Appreciate that, yeah.
So, tentatively, I'll put down the afternoon of Saturday, September twenty-seventh, and then the evening of Tuesday, September thirty. And again, we'll have a little time to try to, um, coordinate that and make sure it works before it gets announced. We'll also have, uh, suggestions for you regarding, uh, the type of, of advertisement that you might put out for it to try and maximize attendance as well. Because we want that input as, as designers, but also to make sure that we're creating a document that is accurately reflecting what the majority of people are, are looking for, so.
We're trying like seven in the evening, that's what we're thinking of.
I, I would say seven to nine, right, we'll try and keep it to two hours, um, overall. Megan's smirking at me, but I, I will try to keep it to two hours.
He's not free to get up and leave, you know.
That's right.
That's why he draws them in with the discussion topics at the end.
And that this is why the food's important as well, but, um, but we'll, we'll, we'll plan with the committee between that.
There you go.
Do you meet dur- during the summer? Does your board meet during the summer?
Once a month, we get together.
You do, okay. So, as we plan with the committee, we can keep you updated on, on that, and we'll, we'll be talking before, uh,
So, afternoon would be like one, two o'clock, something like that, or?
Um.
I'm not trying to nail you down, I'm just trying to get rough ideas, so.
I would say two to four.
Two to four, okay, thank you.
Well, should, should somebody reach out to the senior center?
I'll do it, I'll call them.
You'll do it, okay.
Okay, so two to four and seven to nine, and then obviously, if any cleanup is needed, we may wanna do that.
Sure.
I, I would also ask that, um, hopefully, some members of the committee and or board would be willing to act as facilitators. What I'm, and, and we'll train you.
Okay.
All of five minutes to train you, really. Uh, I mentioned that we have discussion topics, and we break into groups when we do that, um, because smaller groups are easier to, uh, let people be heard. So, depending how many people attend, if we, if we end up with, uh, uh, thirty-two people, let's say, we might break into four groups of eight. You know, six to ten people is usually a good size group. The facilitator's job is simply to keep the discussion on topic, because everybody in the room will be discussing the same question at the same time. So, your group will be focusing on question one, we're asking you to keep that on topic, we're asking you to make sure that one person doesn't dominate the conversation, as I'm doing now, or to make sure that somebody who hasn't spoken, you, you turn to them, we haven't heard from you, do you have any thoughts on this? And all you're doing then is taking bullet point notes. You don't have, they're not, you don't have to take detailed, uh, transcription of everything that's said, but bullet point notes. When we finish the ten to fifteen minutes per question, when we finish the four questions, what we find successful is that everybody gathers back together in a large group. I will be up front, and what I'll do is, is have a conversation, uh, where we review the questions, review the bullet points from each of the groups. Megan actually types them into the computer, and they're showing up on the screen then. So, people actually can see that what they've said has been heard, is showing up, and that document then becomes part of this overall process. So, we, as we design things, when we do come up with some thoughts for this site and the other site, we're actually reflecting, people asked for this, here's how we're able to accomplish it here, here's how we're able to accomplish it there, so that we have an accurate reflection of not just what we think the library should be, or even you as a board in an insulated, you know, looking in bubble or thinking, but actually what the community has asked for and expressed an interest in. So, that's very important to us. Okay?
We're, we're gonna have people that are gonna be certainly behind this, and there'll be some people who probably wouldn't be. So, if we could have some kind of bullet points, you know, they're gonna say, well, we have the internet now, we can get all our information, Wikipedia, if we have, you know, the arguments
Yes.
for why, uh, the library is important still.
That's right.
That would be important, I think.
A sizable library on top of it, because there are many people who are just gonna wanna stay in this building, 'cause it's the library building.
Right.
That's an excellent point. Um, that's usually part of the conversation that I have in the presentation,
Okay.
as well as answering those questions when they come up. The facilitators, although I'm, I'm not telling you what to say, but we're, we're not asking you to engage in, uh, refuting arguments or, you know, that, that's not your role necessarily at that point, but, um, but those questions, if those would be bullet points, and they should come up, and we'll be able to talk about them as a group as a whole. Um, and as I say, I'll give you some, some pointers ahead of time too about some of, some of those issues, but it will be part of the presentation. Another part of the presentation will be a comparison to other libraries, uh, in communities of similar size in terms of what they're able to do, in terms of the size of their buildings, in terms of the size of their collections and so forth, so that we can immediately answer those questions of, is this appropriate for a community of, of our size? You, you hear the Taj Mahal moniker applied to projects sometimes, and sometimes it's very helpful to actually, uh, look at how your community compares to other communities, and you, you might be very surprised, actually, at the results of that. We, we just did this in Saratoga County recently at a tiny little library, um, and people thought, well, seven thousand square feet would be a huge library, do we really need that? And what we did is we showed four other libraries in that li- in the same county with communities that were all within one or two thousand of their community size, and how big tho- those libraries were. And, and the library that I'm referring to was only eighteen hundred square feet, when all of the others were in the nine to ten thousand square foot range. So, that people saw that seven thousand square feet was actually not overly ambitious, if anything, it was simply, you know, uh, 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 a median point for other libraries and communities of that size. So, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about those, those thoughts and, uh, so forth. So, that, that was one thing we wanted to do this evening, is, um, make sure that you're on board with the community workshops. We have not designed anything yet for that reason, we want that input as part of the design. Uh, by the same token, after we get those, that workshop information together, we will be moving forward after that with developing some concepts for the two sites. Uh, one of the things we've heard, um, from a number of sources is a comparison of, of this community to Warwick, where we did a library as well. Uh, that library is about twenty thousand square feet. Having said that, uh, we just wanna make sure that as we develop ideas, we're headed down the right path. So, in your heads, as you recognize other communities around you, start thinking about libraries you know and, and so forth as well, because as a board, you'll be making decisions about the scope and scale of what we develop, and we don't wanna go down the road of developing, for example, your original referendum from a number of years ago was a thirty thousand square foot building. That's a third again, or half again, that's fifty percent larger than Wisner, to use as an example. You know, so, is that appropriate for your community, is something closer to twenty thousand appropriate, or perhaps something smaller than that? So, start thinking about those things as well, because those will be part of the discussion here. Okay, so we wanna give you a heads up on that. Um, so, having said that, uh, really, we have some, some very preliminary thoughts. We've discussed with you and, and shown slides in the past about the, the potential for development of this site. Because of historic preservation requirements, we would not want to Because of historic preservation requirements, we would not want to uh significantly modify uh the front of the building as it faces the street.
This building?
Yeah, of this building, the the architecture and massing of the building and so forth. Um, so we would be looking at things that related to the rear of the building or adjacent properties and so forth. Uh, on the Silesian Park site, obviously, there's there's quite a bit more flexibility and different thoughts. One of the things that uh we've been discussing with the committee, and this is just to give you, because we're architects and we'd like to show something. We can't just sit and talk. Um, our, some of the.
And we think graphical.
That's right. Just some of the things we've been thinking about a little bit uh with the committee about how uh such a s- site might be arranged. We've been very careful in um looking at the site to try and acknowledge the existing uh occupancies and uses. So, for example, this this here is Route two oh seven, so as we go into the property and there's some topography as we go up, the the school is up there, and then this is the area that is often uh public use for big events.
Shakespeare in the Park.
Shakespeare in the Park, for example, that we were just talking about earlier. Um, so we've tried hard to make sure that we are restricting the development of that property in in the options we might discuss for this site to the front of the property, that is towards Route two oh seven, and this accomplishes two things. It maintains the openness of the park at the back, where where it's currently used that way. It allows us to maintain a park-like atmosphere with plantings and trees, and instead of doing one large sea of asphalt, for example, by having winding parking areas divided by islands with trees, uh it allows us to maintain that, you know, uh uh arboreal feel to to the park. It also allows us to put the building, and this is a footprint that's about ten thousand square feet, we just put that down not arbitrarily, but as an idea so that you have a sense of that. Um, it helps anchor that front of the site, that is, it gives a facade along Route two oh seven, similar to the rest of Main Street, which actually faces that street.
Yep.
So we've we've done that version there. Uh, we've managed to maintain the old growth trees by uh altering the routing of the of the entryway as well, so that we can create a boulevard that allows those trees to remain in an island down the center. That's in this version. And you can see that we've, we're starting to explore other options for how this lays out. But we actually walked the site with the committee, I took some cones, I coach soccer, so I have lots of orange cones out there, and we made them run laps. But now what we did is we placed the cones at the various corners of the building layout, we paced that out, and then it allowed uh the committee to start to see how it relates to the chimney, how it relates to the rest of the park and the openness of the space, and the types of spaces we can create with entry plazas, drop-off areas and so forth. So we're very encouraged by the the flexibility and and the ideas that might be expressed there, and we've also started to develop uh what we call bubble diagrams, but relationships of space to each other. That is, as an example, children's rooms often relate to uh public meeting space, because program areas in in a large room with a resilient floor, you can do crafts, you can do large story hours, summer reading programs, and easy access to the children's area of the library, that proximity is often helpful, because now children aren't going from one end of the library to the other or from one floor to another. Um, considerations about if there is a second floor views out over the park, for example, from quiet reading and study areas. Uh, considerations for the staffing of the building in such a way that we're maintaining sightlines and security, which is helpful, obviously, for preservation of your collection and and protection of your staff and the the people in the library, but is also important for what we call patron points of service, that people within the library can always find somebody to help them, it's that it's intuitively used, they know where things are, they know where to find the things they need. So these are things we've started to explore, but we haven't wanted to take these too far without public input into what we're trying to accomplish. So we just thought we'd show, and again, it's very preliminary, and and we know you have a a whole meeting to go through, but we thought we'd show you some different ideas here uh about how those spaces might relate. These are the things the committee is discussing, so.
That's cool.
Does anyone from the committee have anything to add to that? You folks have.
Uh, we we've touched on it at past meetings, um.
Okay, you've been giving updates and good.
We can.
Okay.
The um geothermal concept is still, is an op- one of the options?
It it is something we'll explore. Uh, geothermal is is the heating and cooling of the building through the use of a closed-loop system that runs through very deep wells and uses the the moderate temperature uh underground, once you get five feet below ground, uh to exchange heat. Um, we use it on many of our libraries, Wisner has it, um Sardis has it, uh Cairo has it, for example, uh all recent libraries we've done. It is most cost-effective when you're comparing its use against fuel oil. Um, if you have natural gas available on site, that reduces its um payback because of the efficiency of natural gas. So, but it is one of the things that our engineers look at uh as we explore various systems, and we'll know more once we know more about the actual size of the building and the spaces in it, uh but that we often do a comparison of a chart, and we'll say, to do geothermal, here's what we're looking at, because it has a higher upfront cost to dig those wells. Um, here's what it would cost for uh uh heat pumps that are gr- uh instead of ground source, there might be water source heat pumps and so forth, and various systems. Uh, because that helps us make decisions, not just about the construction costs, but about the long-term operating costs of the library. So that that's absolutely something we do as part of that process when we're making recommendations, so that we're budgeting correctly, because we wouldn't wanna budget for a project and then later decide to do geothermal, and now we've gotta find the cost of that well field somewhere.
Did Wisner look at that or go with that?
We did, um and in fact, uh Wisner had a a geothermal well system designed, and uh we ended up having to modify it in the field because about two hundred feet below ground there, there's a horizontal rift in the in the rock uh that caused an issue. So it it's actually a very flexible system is the reason I tell you the story. Um, so instead of doing thirty wells, four hundred feet deep, we did roughly sixty wells, two hundred feet deep, to avoid that rift. It's a straight calculation, all the, all the fluid cares about is how many lineal feet it's exposed to the heat transfer medium, in this case, the the rock. Um, so it's a, it's a, it's an excellent system, it's it's very effective, uh there's no fuel oil, there's no gas line, all it takes is the electricity to run the pumps. But it's a sophisticated system, and it usually takes a year or two to work out all the kinks to get it working exactly so through the seasons and so forth. Uh, but once running, it's it's it is a terrific system.
Isn't there a consideration, we're bound to not raise our budget by two percent per year, thereabouts, that we don't build a facility that requires a lot more than the two percent increase would allow for when coming up with the fol- the following budgets?
Uh, the the ongoing operating budget is certainly something we look at as part of this, so that you can make those decisions, and and it'll be a question that we have to answer at the time when you get towards a referendum, that'll be something the voters are asking for, is not just what is my annual cost in terms of my property taxes, but what is going to happen with the operating budget of the library? So it is something we'll be exploring as as we go forward, yes. And 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 we can't, you know, promise that you go from a few thousand square feet to, you know, if you were going, like in in the original proposal, to thirty thousand square feet, no matter how efficient that building was, and I don't think you're doing thirty thousand, I mean, the the voters spoke very clearly about that, but hav- having said that, um that would be impossible to think that that operating cost would be, e- even with the most efficient building in the world. Yet, we we try to create a practical building, we've been very successful in in these communities doing that, and and being open and honest with the public about how we've arrived, how we've helped you arrive, I I shouldn't say we arrived, how we help you arrive at those decisions, so. All of this is leading then, if you look at this, excuse me, updated timeline, to a referendum in roughly the spring. Now, nothing's cast in stone, but it, based on the schedule we're talking about, if we have public input at community workshops in September, it allows us to uh continue to design uh from there, um and if the board is happy with the direction and what we're looking at conceptually, a a construction manager can do a more detailed cost estimate even than ours, so that we have some specific numbers, and we would be ready to do something like that if that was an appropriate next move. And you can see, we've carried that all the way through to actual occupancy of either additions and renovations to this building or a new building, whatever it may be, uh this would obviously shift based on the size and scale of a project. Okay? Excuse me, so I'm losing my voice, which may be due to mustiness. Um, I'm the canary in the coal mine when it comes to things like that, but uh are there any questions for us? Again, we didn't wanna keep you all evening, but we wanted to give you a quick snapshot or update of where we are in the process.
Chin, did Nodla run a question by you that she wanted to ask about feasibility of one-story versus two-story?
Yeah, she she um asked that question, um this generally, I think she's inclined to look at a one-story building as a very favorable type of building, but my my first reaction to her was, whatever the number of square feet is that you have, if you go one-story versus two-stories, you're, it's more expensive. Cause your footprint is much larger. Uh, I didn't answer, you know, speaking as an architect, just that's my good feeling.
I can, I, what I'll answer is not just as an architect, but as a library architect, I have very speci- we have very specific opinions about that. What we find, I I agree with your assessment, um when you're building a a building, uh and single-story versus two-story, if you're doing two-story, thank you so much. I apologize for being high needs. Excuse me. Uh, building two stories is more efficient from a construction perspective, because you're building one roof, one foundation, and uh simply adding a floor and and walls, height. However, uh as a library architect, uh we can say that we have other considerations other than the efficiency of the construction of the building. They have to do with supervision of the areas by staff, and and again, the long-term operating costs. Your largest single operating cost and and your treasurer left, I suppose, but I would be willing to bet are personnel costs. Far above what you pay in heating, cooling, collection, uh acquisition or any of those things, it has to do with personnel costs, and not that we're trying to decrease personnel, but we wanna minimize the number you would have to add to supervise a given area. So that, as well as collection layout, that is a means of laying out stacks and your collection, whether it's books, uh media or other special pieces, in a way that makes sense and isn't constricted by tiny rooms or the way they lay out, that there's flexibility. One of the questions I get paid to speak at New York Library Association and other organizations about is how libraries are designed to, for the future, when we don't always know what that is, and the key is a flexible building that's able to adjust to uh variations in usage. Where, we've gone through five consecutive years of renovation projects at the Saratoga Springs Public Library, in a building that's twenty years old. And because the building was originally designed to be flexible, it allows us to shift spaces as they're used. It's it's like the college campus which uh waits until the students walk and wear a path before they pave something. You know, y- we we've done that exactly, we've moved where the teen spaces.
And we moved it again.
Exactly. But very successfully, that that their teen spaces actually won a New York Library Association award for usage and and uh and programming because of the modifications we made to it. But to get to your question, what we find is that typically in the twelve to fifteen thousand square foot range, excuse me, is where we see that threshold. Because of accessibility requirements, keeping things on a single level, makes sense, until you get to a point where it is so large that you can't supervise any more area with the same staff, and that it's grown in footprint so large that it's not as manageable, that you may as well have a second floor and take advantage of the construction efficiency of doing that. In other words, once you grow beyond that twelve to fifteen thousand, you've gotta add more staff anyway, it doesn't make a lot of difference if they're on a second floor or a first floor. So that threshold, as I say, is usually around the twelve to fifteen thousand square foot range. When you get above that, it actually makes sense to start doing multiple floors, because you can also, in a library of that size, start breaking collections into things that make sense on different floors. One of the other things, at least with the Silesian site, would be uh the advantages gained by having a an a second floor view out over the park. There there are some advantages to that, we wanna keep in mind the context of what's around it, we don't wanna make a very large mass of a building, though, so these are pros and cons. At this site, uh the main consideration would be whether two stories would dominate the existing historic building. We wanna be very careful with with historic buildings, that we're maintaining the mass and fabric of the of the original structure that means something to the community um and the historic context, and not overwhelm it with a giant bubble or a giant addition. Um, so those are all considerations.
The school building, you mean, the current school building?
This building. If if we were doing an addition, say, on the back of this building, and you put a two-story addition on the back of it, you need to be careful, because this building has a very uh specific quaint civic architecture to it that would easily be overwhelmed if you weren't careful. So um, as a very wrong answer to what seemed like a simple question, uh, single story is preferable up until you get to about twelve to fifteen thousand square feet, at that point, from a library design standpoint, two stories starts to make more sense, but then there's these other design considerations we wanna evaluate, the site, whether it's appropriate with existing buildings, whether it's appropriate with the park and so forth. As with all things architectural, nothing's black or white, it's a a series of different interrelated questions.
I got a question about the referendum.
Yes. Yes.
Now, that's along with our budget vote, correct? In which would the, it would be asked the public to vote on whether or not to approve a new library?
Um, it's a different vote, the 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 the, your annual budget vote is about the operating of the library on a regular basis.
Correct, is it gonna be the same, is it? Is it gonna be the same time?
Uh, that's a legal question.
Yeah.
I think it's supposed to be.
I think.
Or is it like a capital project in which we put it up at a different point?
It it is a capital project, so it's at least a separate line item.
Yeah.
But you, your attorney would have to answer the question, and the, and if they're bonding through the school district, your school district library?
Yeah.
If you're bonding through the school district, they may have specific requirements too, so that's not a question.
Historically, historically, you put things up for capital projects up usually during the winter, if you want success. Do you, have you found that to be the case? Have you done any studies on that? When is the best time?
Have we done studies? We've, we've got a lot of experience with it.
Right.
We've charted it.
The, yeah.
Sometimes the failures stick in our hearts a little bit more, so we're, we remember those.
There was a PR consultant that we worked with a number of years ago who um suggested doing a a referendum between uh Thanksgiving and and the the Christmas holidays because of the feel-good nature of that.
Right.
It lost by ninety-one votes out of two thousand, you know, so it was a very close vote, but it it not, that that stuck with us in particular because there was this idea that it was going to be uh a very feel-good uh.
And we've heard from a few different sources that January and February are never a good time to do any sort of voting, because people are getting their credit card bills from Christmas spending, and so they always have the capability to vote now.
And so, and when your school taxes go out, so we, what we would do is is work with your attorney and the school district to determine the legal requirements, but then really think about what is an advantageous environment in terms of the context of when do school taxes go out? When, you know, April's a bad time because people are paying their income tax, you know, the, so you wanna, it's more about avoiding certain dates than finding certain dates.
Cause you look at this district just passed a capital project, and when did they put it up? They put it up.
I I don't know, yeah.
Put it up, I'm I'm just saying, they put it up in January.
Did they?
Um, yeah, because previously they had put up a capital project several years earlier, which failed, and it went up much later.
Okay, you're talking about the school district?
School district, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
But I'm just saying that there is, it's, there's this belief system that there's a certain part of the year in which you put some projects up.
We we've heard that, um and but we've had projects pass in the summer, we've had projects pass in the fall, I I don't, I don't know that we've noticed a pattern, other than, as I say, more things to avoid than things to try to find, that's been our experience, but.
Especially like this coming November, people are a little concerned about November, with it being an election.
Carol?
Yes.
I was gonna say that the last one that was done was done at the same time that the budget was done, and also trustees were elected at that um particular voting day. It was um on a separate line item, um but obviously.
The less library capital project.
Yes, that are previous.
Now, was that to be bonded through the school or through DASNY? The Dormitory Authority of the Stadium?
Dormitory.
Through DASNY, see, and that's why I say the school might have, schools bond council may have different input than DASNY's bond council about when, depending on how how the bond is structured. So these are questions we'd have to answer, and and obviously answered before we got to the referendum point. Um, what we were showing here is simply, that would be really the earliest we could be ready based on the the types of things we're talking about, because
So if everything goes to plan, that's when we.
I'm sorry.
If everything goes to this plan, then that's when.
If if it did, but we don't even know what project we're talking about, or, you know, but but yes.
Yeah, right, so.
But we just want you thinking into the future too, it it's easy to think, oh, twenty seventeen, that's way off. There's a lot of things that have to happen between now and then, you can't wait till the end of twenty sixteen and expect then to say, okay, we'll we'll make this happen in twenty seventeen, it doesn't happen like that.
Carol, what about May?
I'm sorry.
The school uh does their vote in May, so we would not have permission to use machines during that, and you have to back up thirty days from their vote to have our election. If it was not held at that time, it would have to be either thirty days before that, or it would have to be sometime in June uh for the use of the machines and permission from the um board elections.
Oh, I I think our goal is to put something together where everybody will embrace.
Yep.
That's all.
It's a bit more more data, you just have the data.
Eight and on one day, we'll be great at this.
Yeah, it makes sense for Goshen and our our patrons will come out and, you know, and support.
Yeah. And and this is part of that process, a- as as we were saying, it's it's not just about us coming up with a good design, but it's about engaging the public in the process, and that's why we think these community workshops are very important, that we get as much of that input as possible and we can respond to it. and that's why we think these community workshops are very important, that we get as much of that input as possible and we can respond to it um and and show people that that you are listening to to what what it is they're actually asking for. Okay, so I apologize for my throat, okay, go ahead.
We're we're gonna do everything possible to get something that is is justified and, you know, that's all.
Yes, right.
Anyway, sorry.
Alright, good, if if there are any other questions for us? We appreciate you taking the time to speak with us this evening.
We appreciate you coming down.
Of course.
Did you guys, can you can you leave these with Matt in case, does anybody wanna review these later or?
We have.
Yeah, smaller versions.
We had the little, the little copies of them. So that's that's okay, alright.
And and they know, uh Matt knows where to reach us, you know, a a single point of contact is generally good, so we're not getting one board member calling about one thing, another and another, but feel free to to pose questions to us, clarify clarifications. We're happy to do that, we we work for you folks and we want to make sure that you have an understanding of the process, so feel free at any time to uh get in touch with us, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now you turn on the A C now.
Was that all for us, to keep it short? Nicely done, very Machiavellian, I like it. No chairs, make us stand.
Bond rates historically um low, bond rates right now?
Bond rates?
Over the span of the last twenty years, right now is a good time.
Interest rates in general are are pretty low right now, that's right, the other thing that's happening for the near future anyway, is that as we're sort of coming out of this recovery, uh bids are very aggressive at the moment. Now, that doesn't help you if we're not talking about bidding, you know, you're not even doing a referendum till twenty fifteen and then construction documents and so forth, but right now, we are getting uh fifteen to twenty bidders on projects that might have only had five to ten bidders in the past and they're very aggressive in their pricing. The other thing that has happened as the uh recession or whatever we want to call it over from twenty oh eight to twenty twelve or so has weeded out a lot of the smaller uh or the contractors who weren't as well-run or well-organized and so the quality of the contractors in general who uh are are still in business has been fairly high and they are bidding on even projects they might not have bid on uh previously, so it's it's a very good bid environment for now. We are seeing a little bit of creeping up as we go, uh but uh Kero Public Library passed a three point two million dollar referendum to do their small seventy-five hundred square foot library and had several hundred thousand dollars left at the end because it had come in under budget. That's a nice position to be in as a library board, so.
Great.
Okay? Thanks, folks.
Some challenge?
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
I'll be right up.
Paulston Spa.
Stop by Saratoga.
That's. Was that another?
I think you're you're asking the wrong person.
Austin Spa, yes, outside of Albany, yeah. Or Clifton Park?
Stop by Saratoga Springs.
By Saratoga. Clifton Park, Saratoga.
Not with no.
It's a hike.
Yeah, it's a hike.
We don't wanna be doing it at eight thirty at night. I think they already.
What?
Pause this.
Pause?
Yeah.
Just waiting for Matt to show on uh.
Pause and put the A C on briefly?
What's that?
Briefly run the A C while it pauses. I just, we're waiting for the Dan to get back, I noticed in the minutes Dan's not coming back to August third. To fix the A C. Will Brendan be looking at it?
Look, swamp fans, what a cooler, nice.
But there may be some things that would help the referendum, that if if the bond interest rates are low, if the bids are aggressive,
Sure.
if land is paid for.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if it all pays.
Absolutely.
The buildings and.
If the land is paid for.
And you're now putting on thirty thousand square foot.
That's what it was, yeah.
Yep.
It's not thirty thousand square feet, we have a that
It's a lot of.
catfighting, fire police and all that other stuff that was pushing people's bodies.
Javelo lounge.
And the dance floor, where we got to go.
We've got banquet parties.
Okay, we could start with the.
We can start with that one.
Very common, so you're.
Committee reports, physical resources, is there anything?
Well, this is kinda what we just did.
Huh? Yeah, I know, is there anything to discuss?
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any repairs or anything.
Yeah.
Well, I guess one of the questions on physical resources would be of the list of things that we've talked about having done with that money, what what's at the top of the list that didn't get done?
Yeah.
So.
What about the caulking, is is that still?
Caulking that was one of the issues.
The caulking, no caulking.
A lot of the caulking.
Might be costly.
Yeah.
Isn't it something the, well, for the windows for integrity?
Well. What? We're gonna have to meet about it later, w- what we'll have to look at um is whether we're keeping the building building or selling it later on, we still need to do maintenance plans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good for you.
So there's gonna be s- some, you know, so the caulking, taking care of the windows, um possibly replacing the windows or just the caulking. Um paint job outside, the brickwork still needs repointing, um the siding is actually looking pretty bad.
Pretty bad, yeah.
Yeah, in the back, in the newer part of the building.
Yeah.
Uh and then aside from that, the side, you know, projects in terms of the uh parking lot, we're still considering, but I don't know that that's a good time to do that this year, maybe we can do that next year if we don't, you know, the thinking there was just to get a couple more spots out of the back and with one of the trees gone now, maybe we can, you know, we can briefly look at that, but I don't think it's as critical as the other things, keeping the building together, um.
Yeah, should we meet another night or day or whatever, or could we?
Yeah, I mean, we can.
When's the meeting for you and you guys, because I'm much more flexible obviously than you are.
Well.
Not Monday, not next Monday, it's gonna be finally block out there.
Um throw out some dates, whether now or through email and we'll we'll come up at the neutral time.
I'll let you uh.
Yeah, we'll start email, huh, yeah.
Throw some dates, yeah.
Okay, community resources?
It's mostly one of those outreach kind of letters to the editor's staff.
Oh, okay.
We really don't do much of that without, no, I mean, that's what it's, you know, you say that community resources does.
You're. I just wanted to mention, Caroline just said it'd probably just be good to have these things on here so she could reflect in the minutes if there's anything, anything someone wanted to bring up that they wanna
Uh so they're all on here, just in case.
Cause we usually just do, okay, so feel free to say nothing from this minute, that's fine, don't excuse me.
Right, alright. Right, it's just it's just up here so we don't miss anything back, yeah.
Alright, right. I wasn't sure. Uh human resources is. Well.
Um we're gonna talk about amongst our sellers about Matt, what a wonderful job he's doing.
Alright.
Sounds like it's pretty much.
Is it a reference gathering, new ref- is that a new reference gathering? Big Baron?
Well, he's, no, we've talked, he's a substitute, he's been.
He's been around, okay.
He's just, don't see him much yet.
Hadn't met him before, okay.
But is there anything to discuss now regarding?
No, not really.
Oh, okay.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
No, it's just.
It's the heat.
It's a, it's a little muggy in here, I'm sorry.
Not really.
Did I?
I I can actually put the sound, that's a little bit, that's noise.
What?
Ah.
Did I understand you that human resources was nothing?
Nothing, we got nothing going on, nothing, really.
Nothing, no report.
Sunshine Committee is.
That's true.
Yeah, that's the guy who sends flowers and cards to people, do you need money?
Can I recycle the junk, it's partly cloudy?
How's the funding for the Sunshine Committee, is it rebooted or?
That was good, yeah.
Yeah, but you're always.
Try the wheel.
I mean. Was that in cards, said in cards that Joe and Danny?
That's a good idea.
It's present sunshine.
Alright, then.
With the friends, I guess we heard from already, right, with the uh book sale and, was there more?
Yeah, yeah. Book sale?
Right, are there anything you wanted to add? Big band concerts coming up, is it the fourth?
I think it's the third, Saturday?
I yeah, it's uh.
Is this, is it Saturday, the third?
It's the first weekend, right, it's the first weekend of August?
Yeah.
Which is the second or third?
It's the Saturday.
So it's the second, August second?
Second.
Yeah, I have here August second big band, six, six P M.
Okay.
We're all set with that, right, everything's in place, okay.
I believe so, the, we've got the band, we've got the ice cream, we've got the site, so
It's.
Oh, yeah, well, what do you need?
I've gotta send out, I just received a flyer from Ann, I've gotta send stuff out tomorrow and do it through the papers.
Nice.
I will put put something online soon.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other committee reports? I have another there, uh maybe I I can take that out now, I guess, they're all listed. And we had no other unfinished business to discuss?
I don't think we did.
No. Okay, then new business in first, well, maybe the only selection of officers, committee assignments.
I nominate the following people.
Uh we we have a slate of officers.
Sure do.
Keith, President, Ellen Mary, Vice Presidents, Secretary Norma and Auditor of the Bills, yours truly.
One more.
Nice.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah, it's deja vu.
Congratulations.
And Mr. Secretary, you've cast one vote for this slate?
Yeah, Secretary, you're the Secretary officially right now, aren't you?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you cast uh one vote for?
I cast one vote.
Represent.
Thank you.
Alright, that's a good one.
Done deal.
Do we, do we need to say all of it, or not, again, I'm busy.
I can, I can.
You can ask for, you can ask for anybody, nominations from the floor.
We can.
I think we, only if you give him a hard time, that happens.
No nominations from the floor, just making sure, we're good.
Yeah, we're good.
Alright.
So the committee assignments, are we keeping that the same or? I think that's just, I think that's the easy way to go.
Yeah.
Yeah. Deprive reports.
It's too warm to think about.
Committee assignments will remain the same?
Yes.
Yes, they will.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you for asking, yeah.
It's been a good year.
Yeah, right, well, it works, why is it so, nobody, nobody's really, is anybody itching to get off whatever committee they're on, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make anybody stay with it.
Yeah, I know.
Well, if anybody wants to get on an additional committee that's on, speak up now.
There you go, you wanna add to your workload. There we go.
So uh I guess that's it.
I think we're done.
New business.
Alright.
Uh proposed agenda items for next month's meeting? I I like your changes, Carol. Means less updating for this.
Yeah, it's um in i- in the, the idea was brought forth so that if someone said, gee, we haven't heard from this committee and or did this committee say anything about thus and such, at least we have record that they said nothing.
Right.
Nothing was mentioned, so, but um it it is a good idea to to single out each one and.
Yep, uh privilege of the floor, as we have nobody here, uh the attendance, so we'll move on. Uh there's there's need to go into executive session tonight, but.
Yes.
So um you know, I don't know what I've done in the past, do I actually make, do we make a motion to?
Yes, to question.
Have to go later, you went to executive session.
Is it to go into executive session or to, but that's it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then there's one later to come out and then.
And isn't there another one to, to adjourn?
To adjourn, to adjourn.
To adjourn, but there could be a motion made in between those if anything has been brought up during the executive session that requires one.
Oh, okay, yes.
Yeah, we are adjourning via a voting.
Right, that we discussed or, okay. Can I have a motion to go into executive session, or should we wait for Ellen Mary to come back? I think we're.
Well, should we back, sure.
Okay, Bernie made the motion, Ryan seconded, all in favor, I, and opposed, yeah.
I'll second.
Alright.
So, executive session over.